This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order and the Chair calls on the City Clerk, Ivan Nelson, for the roll call.
Councilman Harris?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Avery?
Here.
Eccles?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and the meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Williams to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this opportunity to convene once again. Father, we thank you for those who were in attendance. We thank you for the interest in that of City Government or God and we thank you for this great city and all that we've accomplished and all that you have in store for us going forward. We ask you to continue to bless those who are here, Father, those who have a genuine love for their city and a desire to see their city improve and we ask, Father God, that you will continue to bless us and keep us, for it's in Jesus' name. We ask it all. Amen.
Amen. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Chair will entertain the motion to approve the minutes of the work sessions and the City Council meeting held on June the 25th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion carries to approve minutes.
Chair, will entertain the motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of June the 21st through the 27th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
A second, I'm sorry. Can I have a discussion right quick?
Mm-hmm.
We, as you know, we've been working on the issues of ratifying payments of accounts as opposed to approving and I've asked the City Clerk to set up a finance committee meeting for next week. I forgot to discuss it upstairs and we're going to ask that the Mayor have a representative of the Finance Department, who else was it?
MIS.
MIS, will have a representative there. We're going to look very strongly at moving due dates as far as accounts payables and other things back so this council can in real time approve payments of accounts as opposed to ratifying. So this meeting will occur next Tuesday at pre-council meeting. So she'll be contacting everybody at the time, for the time.
Okay.
Okay.
Proclamation, are there any?
Nope.
Did we vote the?
No. Still need to vote.
That's what I thought.
Those in favor to ratify payment of the accounts, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion carries to ratify.
No proclamation. Unfinished business, we have none today. Number nine, this is a time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or favor of a resolution approving issuance of an alcoholic beverage license for NDS Food Mart LLC located at 412A South 3rd Street in District 4. This is for all premises only retail beer and table wine licenses. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it? Chair, will entertain the motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Number 10 is a resolution reappointing members to the Gadsden Commercial Development Authority. This reappoints Jaris Ross, Harry McLendon, David Williamson, Carolyn Parker for terms expiring December 31st, 2015. Chair, will entertain the motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Number 11 is a resolution appointing and reappointing members to the City Board of Education. This reappoints Ralph Lane for a term expiring June 1st, 2018 and appoints Lynn Taylor for a term expiring June 1st, 2016. Chair, will entertain the motion to adopt this res- resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
New business, is there any?
Yes, Mr. President, I have, how do I find it here? I have a resolution, I would like to ask for unanimous consent to consider today authorizing acceptance of a grant from the Ottawa County Community Development Committee.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed? Consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, this is a resolution authorizing acceptance of a grant from the Ottawa County Community Development Committee and it will be for $25,000 to purchase kitchen items.
And those will be going at the Carver Community Center, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Which includes Carver Community Center, right?
Just want to make that clear where they were going?
This is application and acceptance, right?
Yes, application and acceptance.
Yes.
Sound good to me. That's it.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a couple items. The first being a resolution adopting revised Title VI Plan to ensure the level and quality of transportation services. I ask that we consider this today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed? Consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, again, this is a, this is a, an update to the Title VI Plan as relates to transportation services and it ensures, again, the quality and level of services without regard to race, color, or national origin. So, again, this is a federal requirement that the city has and this is, again, updating our plan.
And I'll also add to that, that the Mayor is authorized to implement the plan and the Mayor, through Title VI's, will provide periodic updates to the City Council as necessary.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
The second item that I have here is a resolution authorizing artwork and donation agreement. I ask that we consider this today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed? Consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, I'll keep this simple. Many of us have been made aware or have witnessed, in particular during First Friday, the artwork that's downtown. So this is relative to that artwork and this involves a charitable trust foundation that, of course, is going to be making a tax deductible donation to the Gadsden Cultural Arts Foundation and then, of course, the Cultural Arts Foundation will in turn use this donation of $75,000 to purchase art. So this is a net, in terms of the expense of purchasing the art, it's a net zero effect for the city. So the city's not going to be incurring any expense as relates to the purchase.
Any other discussion?
This is the artwork in there in front of the bank on, what, 3rd?
Fourth.
Fourth Street. That's the object that we're talking about.
In front of BB&amp;T.
Yeah, BB&amp;T.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt. Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be known by saying aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, I'll keep this simple. Many of us have been made aware or have witnessed, in particular during First Friday, the artwork that's downtown. So this is relative to that artwork and this involves a charitable trust foundation that, of course, is going to be making a tax deductible donation to the Gadsden Cultural Arts Foundation and then, of course, the Cultural Arts Foundation will in turn use this donation of $75,000 to purchase art. So this is a net, in terms of the expense of purchasing the art, it's a net zero effect for the city. So the city's not going to be incurring any expense as relates to the purchase.
Any other discussion?
This is the artwork in there in front of the bank on, what, 3rd?
Fourth.
Fourth Street. That's the object that we're talking about.
In front of BB&amp;T.
Yeah, BB&amp;T.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a resolution and this is a warning bid 3239 for transit passengers shelters. So I'd ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed? Consent has been granted.
I'd ask for, what motion did we accept?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, this is the passenger shelters that we have on the streets for our trolley stops. There are a number of locations that's included in this. I think it's a $26,000 amount.
Seven.
There's seven shelters that's included in this and, of course, I'm looking forward to six of them being in District 3. I mean, anyway, we hope that we're going to be able to get these installed as soon as possible because it's been a long time in coming in several areas where we have young people who also use the school bus area, stops at some of these shelters and some of these stops and hopefully we'll have those things installed but by the time school starts back, just in case all the rainy weather and everything else. So I'm excited about this.
Robert, I hate to burst your bubble on that, but you're getting three in District 3 and District 4 is getting six. We've already got these seven in place. We've already talked about it, so, you know, we just have to deal with them three this trip.
I understand which for thinking about it.
But we will try to satisfy some more money and see if we can't get some more shelters in some different places. You have to start somewhere and we've been around, seen a lot of people standing out in the rain trying to catch the shelters. Not only younger people, older people's out there, you know, soaking wet when they catch these shelters and they don't need to be doing that because they need to have somewhere they can get and they dry. Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business? That it?
That's it.
Department reports, committees, boards, okay?
Thank you to the President and Council. Particularly thank you for approving the purchase of the artwork downtown. That's something that we've really been pleased with. It has, it's a lot of pedestrian traffic and Bobby's worked hard to make that work and Mario Galardo from the Wallet Gallery, we really owe him a lot of credit for that, so.
Tell them who you are so that people-
I'm sorry, I'm Kay Moore. I'm Director for Downtown Gadsden. I just thought I knew everybody and everybody, but they don't and hello, everybody out there.
You're also talking on the radio.
That's true, and TV. You're right, you're right. Thank you, Council President. Had a great, I'm going to get Buster Porch to do a rain dance for me on Thursday and Friday. Yesterday at Musical Mondays, it was clouded over and Buster came out and if you haven't been to Musical Monday from 11:30 to 1:30 at the water wall between the Senior Activities Center and the, and the Pittman Theater, it's been a great thing. So Buster, Buster, I need you Thursday and Friday for your rain dance, okay?
Buster, play a music called "Sunny."
"Sunny," okay, that's it, that's it. This week is a big week for all of us. This is, we celebrate our nation's independence. We're going to start Thursday. The Patriots Association has scheduled fireworks on Thursday night, which is the 4th of July. I've had a lot of people calling and say, are you having fireworks on First Friday? As hard as I try, I can't make First Friday a national holiday. So we will have the fireworks on the 4th of July at 9 o'clock. They'll be shot from behind Hobby Lobby over the river and, and hopefully, you know, right now the weather forecast doesn't look good, but we'll see what the contingency plan is. Maybe if it gets rained out and First Friday doesn't, we could have fireworks on First Friday, but got a lot of great things. Again, our shops are open late. They're here to, to bring people in to downtown and they'll be there for you and we're just going to have a great time, lots of good entertainment, just food, fun, fellowship. It's free. Thanks to the Gadsden City Police Department for making us safe and for the Ottawa County Sheriff's Department for having officers out there to make us safe out there. So Friday night from 6 to 9 o'clock, hopefully no rain. I'm going to, Buster, I'm going to find that song and play it all day. Can I just do that? If I can't find it, I'm going to call you and you can play it for me. But Buster will not be there this Monday. Let me go ahead and say that too. July the 8th, Musical Mondays will not happen this Monday, but if you've not been there, you need to come out to that. So lots of great things happening downtown. One of our newest stores, Churchill Antiques, opened yesterday in the 600 block up next to Ramona's, so across from the Pittman Theater. So y'all, if you haven't tried that, it's, it's a great thing, so that's good. And then, I guess, the final thing Friday night is our concert at the Amphitheater with Super Funk Fantasy. Again, we're rain dependent on this one because we don't have a game plan, so we're, we're really hoping that we, we can get some good weather in here on Thursday and Friday, so anything y'all can do to help, I would appreciate, so. Have anybody have any, any questions for me before I go sit back down?
Yes, I do, Kay.
Yes, sir.
You know, we still have that ongoing conversation about the 600 block for First Friday and we talked about swapping events around from one block to the next block. Have we made any progress, hopefully, in putting some groups down in the 600 block bands or what have you?
We tried a band last week, I mean, last month and because the dancers are there and that's where they want to be, that's the best location for those dancers, the line dancers and they've been here for four, probably three or four years now and, and I did move them across Sixth Street to, to the west side to try to bring more people that way, but unless we can find somebody that's not going to clash with them, that's the problem that we have. They don't want to move.
They don't want to move?
The dancers do not want to move and that's the best location we have for them because of the size space that they need.
Okay, so, okay, I don't know who was in charge, I didn't know, but it-
Okay. Well, we can, I mean, I can, we can, we can have a meeting and talk to them if you want to. I'm just telling you-
Let's do that.
I've had a conversation and I'm not sure where I could move them to make it better for them.
Well, we can just clear a block out, maybe the 300 block or the 400 block and let them do that and then put everybody else down in the 600 block, but let's have a meeting, we'll talk about it.
Okay, that'll be great. All right. Anyone else? Thank you very much and let's just pray for good weather for the 4th and 5th.
Any other department reports or committees? Citizens request, Tom Hudson, City, he wants to talk about City Services. Please state your address for the City Clerk and limit your remarks to five minutes, please.
Been a while, everybody. And Tom Hudson, scenic drive. First, I got irate this past Monday that I've got my garbage picked up up on the mountain and all and everybody keeps their house and property neat up there on the mountain and I got, I walked up to get my garbage can, I like to have a heart attack. For 50 feet down the road was nothing but oil that the truck had spewed out, garbage juice. Ooh, it was rough, early in the morning. I thought, what in the world? I picked up a bunch of broken glass out of the garbage juice right in front of my driveway and, and I took, I went back, it made me so mad, I took pictures. I mean, it's just, it's really bad, but I'll let y'all look at those right there and there's, and I wasn't going to get any deeper into the garbage juice to get glass out of it, but, but I, I thought, well, what? And so I called the head of the sanitation department and all and he sent somebody out there and put oil dry all over everything like that's going to pick up garbage juice, but he did it, thank goodness and, and so that being said, I found out a little later that the truck they used to pick up the garbage was a 1993 model that's got way over a half a million miles on it and he said, and this, the guy was telling me, he said, it's just, they're just wore out. They just, we can't fix them, they're too far gone. And, and I thought, well, they had that just fine. So I thought, what are they spending the money on? So, so, but then I talked to several different people, including Sherman and, and his assistant and all and after finding out how far y'all have got the city out of debt, I'm going to brag on you a little bit. I know that sounds unusual for me, but I do appreciate getting the city out of debt. I mean that, I appreciate it, out of at least less debt than we were in. Now, some of you have been on there long enough that you incurred that debt and I'm not too happy about that, but at least we're paying it down and thank you. But, but that being said, I found out a little later and I've heard it from five different people in, in a position of authority that they're talking, y'all are talking about farming the garbage pickup out and, and I don't know what's going to happen on that, but my, my answer is this, is if y'all, if that's what you want to do, then I hope it doesn't cost me any more money. I hope it doesn't cost me any more money because everywhere that gets that, somehow or another, it seems to end up costing twice as much and your service isn't as good. So while I applaud your paying down the debt, you also have to provide services to the residents of the city and, I mean, hence, what is the city for? I mean, it just, is it to, to just say we're a city without services? I don't know. You know, and if you're going to dump oil and everything in front of my driveway, I'll just, I guess I need to handle the garbage pickup myself, I don't know, but, but that's not an option is running in front of my, my new house. That's not an option to make it look like the garbage dump. That's not an option. And, and while I'm on the subject, it's, you, when you're talking about doing away with garbage services, there's a lot of people that's going to lose a job. I mean, you know-
We're not going to do that.
Well, it's, all I know is, and I'm not going to start calling names who told me, but every one of them's head of a department with maybe one exceptional one, including the Mayor, hinted around at it, including the Mayor. And, and the problem is, is you're going to treat the, the city employees pretty bad when you start trying, you know, you taking their jobs away and all and, and they told me that, I've talked to several different city employees and they told me, said, you know, it's just, they just, the council just acts like we're not even people. And, and they said, and I think three different people told me, without exception, and would you believe the one of them, the council that treats us the worst of all, you used to work for the city and I'm not calling any names, but we know who that is.
You can, you can call a name if you want.
Okay, Johnny, they said that you don't, they said that you take less care of them than anybody.
You're not supposed to call his name, Phil.
I didn't call his name. He held it up, said, he told his, he said, you didn't take my name.
Well, he might have just got ahead of himself, but we don't do that on the council.
Well, you need to work it out with him then, Ben.
I will.
Okay, work it out with him.
You keep it in your mouth.
Hey, you're not going to do to me what you did last time. I had people tell me, what, what does that big guy got against you? What does that big guy got against you? And I said, I don't know, but you know, hey, I can play that game too. But that being said, okay, I won't say no more about that.
Tom, your five minutes is up, Tom.
Oh, is that, what does that mean, Ben?
It means I'll talk to you outside as soon as this is over.
Well, that'll work just fine.
I'll meet you there.
That'll work, that'll work just fine.
I think your time's over.
No, you interrupted it. I didn't, you were taking my time.
Did you not tell him his time was up?
Yes, his time's up.
Okay, well, that's just fine. I'll see you outside, Ben.
I'll be there.
Remarked by the Mayor and the Council. Billy, you want to start?
I don't know. I don't know if I need to say anything or not. I'm a little, I'm a little, I'm a little discouraged about the way things have happened here in this council meeting today. I understand that we all have grievances, you know, and, and everything doesn't go to everybody's satisfaction, to, to everyone's liking at all times, but we must have civility in all of our actions that we have here in this City Council meeting. And I don't know, we just, maybe we went a little overboard today and I, I hope that we will get above those type of actions and activities. And the only other thing I'd like to say is that we have a 4th of July celebration coming up, birth of our nation, freedom of our nation. I hope everybody celebrates this coming Thursday, have a good time, enjoy it and be with us next Tuesday when we have council meeting again. Thank you.
Eric?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to speak to my district meeting on yesterday. It was well attended by both folks from the community and the city employees that showed up to support, so I, I definitely appreciate that. You know, didn't run the tally on how many problems we actually solved yesterday, but we addressed a number of issues and, and had some good, good dialogue, I believe. Now, I will tell you this, I did show up early as promised to play bingo with the, those folks that were playing bingo there and I got handled pretty rough. First of all, they didn't want to let me play and Councilman Harris's wife in particular didn't want to let me play and, and then, of course, when they did decide as a group that they wanted to let me play, she took my card, so.
She declared you to be out of order in that.
Yeah, so, you know, they said something about age and, you know, I cried age discrimination, but that didn't work. They sat me down and shut me up, so, but it was, it was fun. I, and it was very educational because I grew up playing bingo one way, straight line bingo. There are 30 different ways to play bingo and I had no idea you could do that. I mean, I learned some terms around the world and blackout and crazy tea and some other stuff that I just never knew about, so, but that, that was a lot of fun and it was just good to, to have the chance to engage and, and dialogue with folks. I'm going to hit very quickly, you know, of course, most of us know by now that there was a recent Supreme Court ruling as it relates to Section 5 of the Voting Rights Act. You know, obviously that's not, that's not necessarily a council issue, but it is something that, that impacts the city and anybody that does anything relative to the electoral process. And I can tell you right now, folks, and this, more of this is just, you know, my opinion and, you know, I just happen to be the one with the microphone right now. The state of Alabama in particular and many other southern states, but the state of Alabama in particular lacks the cultural maturity to, to engage in the electoral process without federal oversight. Now, I don't expect anybody, everybody to agree with me there, but I can tell you that looking at our history, looking at how the, the Voting Rights Act has worked in 68 when it was enacted, there were 11 across the southern states, there were 11 minority or African-American elected officials. There are over 300 now. You know, it's almost like telling me that now that my blood pressure has gone down, stop taking my medicine. It's, it's unbelievable. It's, for, for me, it's very frightening. The electoral process now is very frightening. Now, I do realize that there are some other recourse, that there is some other recourse through the, through what's left of it, but, but it's concerning because I think smaller towns and cities and those groups who don't have the financial resources are now going to hit a brick wall when it comes to opposing issues that serve to disenfranchise them. So it's, again, it's very concerning and, and, and again, it's, it's, you know, it's also concerning to hear us discuss as a state a lot of, and have a lot of dialogue relative to voter ID when there's no problem with ID at the, at the polls. So I, I think that's much ado about nothing, but again, that's, that's my two cents as it relates to voter, voter rights and, or the Voting Act, Voting Rights Act and Section 5 as it has been eliminated. That's very concerning for me. With the 4th of July holiday coming up this week, I did want to offer up as a reminder that the NORs ordinance for the city of Gadsden does, does address the, the issue of fireworks and Chief, you correct me where I, where I may misstate this, but as I, as I understand it, from 9:00 PM to 4:00 AM, I believe?
To 6:00.
To 6:00, okay, from 9:00 PM to 6:00 AM fireworks are not allowed and they're actually, that activity is actually addressed by the, by the, by the NORs ordinance. So please be mindful of this, especially in those neighborhoods, young people, where there may be elderly folks in your community. Please be mindful of this and respectful of this NORs ordinance. The last thing I want to address is that, you know-
...his assistant and all, and after finding out how far y'all have got the city out of debt, I'm gonna brag on you a little bit. I know that sounds unusual for me, but I do appreciate getting the city out of debt. I mean that, I appreciate it. Out of at least less debt than we were in. Now, some of you have been on there long enough that you incurred that debt, and I'm not too happy about that, but at least we're paying it down, and thank you. But that being said, I found out a little later, and I've heard it from five different people in a position of authority, that they're talking, y'all are talking about farming the garbage pickup out. And I don't know what's gonna happen on that, but my answer is this, is if y'all, if that's what you want to do, then I hope it doesn't cost me any more money. I hope it doesn't cost me any more money, because everywhere that gets that, somehow or another, it seems to end up costing twice as much and your service isn't as good. So while I applaud your paying down the debt, you also have to provide services to the residents of the city. And I mean hence, what is the city for? I mean, is it to just say we're a city without services? I don't know. You know, and if you're gonna dump oil and everything in front of my driveway, I'll just, I guess I need to handle the garbage pickup myself, I don't know. But that's not an option is running in front of my new house. That's not an option to make it look like the garbage dump. That's not an option. And while I'm on the subject, it's, you, when you're talking about doing away with garbage services, there's a lot of people that's gonna lose a job. I mean, you know.
We're not gonna do that.
Well, it's, all I know is, and I'm not gonna start calling names who told me, but every one of them's head of a department, with maybe exceptional one, including the mayor, hinting around at him, including the mayor. And the problem is, is you're gonna treat the city employees pretty bad when you start trying, you know, and you taking their jobs away and all. And they told me that, I've talked to several different city employees, and they told me, saying, you know, it's just, they just, the council just acts like we're not even people. And they said, and I think three different people told me, without exception, and would you believe the one of them, the council that treats us the worst of all, used to work for the city? And I'm not calling any names, but we know who that is.
You can call a name if you want.
Okay, Johnny, they said that you don't, they said that you take less care of them than anybody.
You're not supposed to call his name, sir.
I didn't call his name. He held it up, said he told his, you didn't take mine.
He might have just got ahead of himself, but we don't do that on this council.
Well, you need to work it out with him then, Ben.
I will.
Okay, work it out with him. Hey, you're not gonna do to me what you did last time. I had people tell me, what does that big guy got against you? What does that big guy got against you? And I said, I don't know. But you know, hey, I can play that game too. But that being said, okay, I won't say no more about that.
Tom, your five minutes is up, Tom.
What does that mean, Ben?
It means I'll talk to you outside soon as this is over.
Well, that'll work this fine.
I'll meet you there.
That'll work this fine.
I think your time's over.
No, you interrupted it. I didn't, you were taking my time.
Did you not tell him his time was up?
Yes, his time's up.
Okay, well, that's just fine. I'll see you outside, Ben.
I'll be there.
Remarques by the mayor and the council.
I don't know. I don't know if I need to say anything or not. I'm a little discouraged about the way things have happened here in this council meeting I understand that we all have grievances, you know, and everything doesn't go to everybody's satisfaction, to everyone's liking at all times, but we must have civility in all of our actions that we have here in this city council meeting. And I don't know, we just, maybe we went a little overboard today, and I hope that we will get above those type of actions and activities. And the only other thing I'd like to say is that we have a Fourth of July celebration coming up, birth of our nation, freedom of our nation. I hope everybody celebrates this coming Thursday, have a good time, enjoy it, and be with us next Tuesday when we have council meeting again. Thank you.
Eric.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to speak to my district meeting on yesterday, it was well attended by both folks from the community and the city employees that showed up to support, so I definitely appreciate that. You know, didn't run the tally on how many problems we actually solved yesterday, but we addressed a number of issues and had some good dialogue, I believe. Now, I will tell you this, I did show up early as promised to play bingo with those folks that were playing bingo there, and I got handled pretty rough. First of all, they didn't want to let me play, and Councilman Harris' wife in particular didn't want to let me play. And then, of course, when they did decide as a group that they wanted to let me play, she took my card.
She declared you to be out of order in that.
Yeah, they said something about age, and you know, I cried age discrimination, but that didn't work. They sat me down and shut me up, so, but it was fun. And it was very educational, because I grew up playing bingo one way, straight line bingo. There are thirty different ways to play bingo, and I had no idea you could do that. I mean, I learned some terms around the world, and blackout, and crazy T, and some other stuff that I just never knew about, so, but that was a lot of fun, and it was just good to have the chance to engage and dialogue with folks. I'm gonna hit very quickly, you know, of course, most of us know by now that there was a recent Supreme Court ruling as it relates to Section Five of the Voting Rights Act. You know, obviously, that's not necessarily a council issue, but it is something that impacts this city and anybody that does anything relative to the electoral process. And I can tell you right now, folks, and this, more of this is just, you know, my opinion, and, you know, I just happen to be the one with the microphone right now. The state of Alabama in particular, and many other southern states, but the state of Alabama in particular lacks the cultural maturity to engage in the electoral process without federal oversight. Now, I don't expect anybody to agree with me there, but I can tell you that, looking at our history, looking at how the Voting Rights Act has worked in sixty-eight, when it was enacted, there were eleven, across the southern states, there were eleven minority or African-American elected officials. There are over three hundred now. You know, it's almost like telling me that now that my blood pressure has gone down, stop taking my medicine. It's unbelievable. It's, for me, it's very frightening. The electoral process now is very frightening. Now, I do realize that there are some other recourse, there is some other recourse through what's left of it, but it's concerning, because I think smaller towns and cities and those groups who don't have the financial resources are now gonna hit a brick wall when it comes to opposing issues that serve to disenfranchise them. So it's, again, it's very concerning, and again, it's, you know, it's also concerning to hear us discuss as a state, a lot of, and have a lot of dialogue relative to voter ID, when there's no problem with ID at the polls. So I think that's much ado about nothing, but again, that's my two cents as it relates to voter rights and, or the Voting Rights Act and Section Five as it has been eliminated. That's very concerning for me. With the Fourth of July holiday coming up this week, I did want to offer up as a reminder that the Norris Ordinance for the City of Gaston does address the issue of fireworks. And Chief, you correct me where I may misstate this, but as I understand it, from nine PM to four AM, I believe?
To six.
To six, okay. From nine PM to six AM, fireworks are not allowed, and they're actually, that activity is actually addressed by the Norris Ordinance. So please be mindful of this, especially in those neighborhoods, young people, where there may be elderly folks in your community. Please be mindful of this and respectful of this Norris Ordinance. The last thing I want to address is that, you know, I want to thank the council and the council president in particular for allowing me the latitude to commission two subcommittees to address a couple of issues that have been raised here recently, to the council and to the mayor. We've done some of this in the past, some of us, as I've been told, you know, have referred to them historically as ad hoc committees, and I think in most of our, in most of our language, they're referred to as ad hoc committees. But essentially, there will be two subcommittees that will be commissioned for a short window of time, and one subcommittee will serve to address the issue of diversity at City Hall, and the second subcommittee will address those of youth, the issue of youth programs. There's a lot of discussion last week about youth programs and youth activities, so we'll have at least one of these committees to address that issue. There will be at least one member on these committees that will come from the community at large, because we are very interested in feedback from the community on these particular issues. The rules of engagement will be pretty simple. These committees will have the opportunity to address whatever opportunities that exist and identify the root causes of whatever issues we have as a city. They'll also be tasked with coming up with both reasonable and practicable countermeasures to whatever those issues are, and then making recommendations to both the mayor and the council in any relevant committee at City Hall. So we hope, I've spoken to the mayor, and the mayor supports this activity. Now, the mayor, nor the council, nor any of the committees are bound to carry out any of the recommendations that are being made, but I can assure you that we will view all of the recommendations in earnest. So again, I want to thank the council president for allowing us the latitude to engage in this activity, and I think it'll be, it'll be good, positive activity for the city. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. President. Brother Williams, thank you for bringing up the issue about some of the Supreme Court decisions that have been made recently. As a matter of fact, we were in Washington last week at the NLC, the National League of Cities Summer Policy Forum, and a number of these issues were brought up and addressed at that forum. What happens at this forum, there's seven standing committees for the National League of Cities, and then out of that forum and those committees, the National League takes a policy statement or stand on issues, and then go to Congress to try to deal with those issues. We selected three major issues to deal with this year, and of course, two of those came out of the committee that I chair. And I'm very pleased with the work that we do. We have elected officials from all over the country to come together and then sit down and debate what we feel like is something that we think all cities should take on as a policy or a position. And voter oppression or voter ID was one of those issues. It's still a problem, not only in Alabama, but it's a problem around the country, when you have all of these states' legislatures enacting these voter identification laws saying that they're trying to stop voter fraud, but yet nobody can identify any voter fraud. So there must be another underlying issue, and at least we have elected officials from around the country who feel the same way about it as we do here in this state. You know, it's, anyway. And then, of course, there were several other major issues that I won't get into. I'm in the buckle of the Bible belt, so I don't think I want to tackle that. But we talked about the Domer decision from the court. You know, most people look at it from a religious standpoint, but we as elected officials have to look at it from the standpoint that we need to protect our employees, Tom. And it's about employees, it's about protecting people, and it's about cost to cities for insurance and a number of other issues. And that's what the National League of Cities looked at as opposed to the religious aspect of it. You can get in that and debate that all day long. But when you look at it from a cost-effective measure for cities and municipalities across the country, then, you know, you have to support some of those issues based on those things. But again, like I said, I don't want to get into any deep discussions about that, but it was a great forum. I think we came up with a number of issues that we're gonna be dealing with over the next few months on Capitol Hill, and hopefully, we're gonna be successful. We were very successful in getting the Senate to deal with the fair market issue. That was the other issue that came out of my committee that is one of the national priorities. And of course, right now, they're working on the House to see if we can get it passed through the House. We're talking about millions, well, let me rephrase that, we're talking about billions of dollars in taxes that municipalities across this country do not receive at this point in time. And people say, well, that's an additional tax. No, it's not an additional tax. What it is, is protecting, where's Kay? It's protecting our mom and pop shops on Broad Street who have to compete with these people on the internet. And of course, hopefully, we can level that playing field, and a lot of people are complaining about you're trying to tax the internet. Well, what we're trying to do is to make an equal playing field for our local businesses. And I think if people look at it from that standpoint, then I think we're gonna be okay, and I think the National League of Cities' policy is that we do support taxing the internet and making sure that municipalities and state governments get their fair share of those taxes. So it was an interesting meeting, a great meeting. Just wanted to give y'all a brief report on what happened last week. I don't want to talk about the bad things, and it took me like twelve hours to get from DC back home, flying, not driving. Oh, yes, and First Saturday, thank you. I told Jenna to remind me. First Saturday's coming up, this Saturday, on Tuscaloosa Avenue. Please, ma'am, and please, sir, be mindful of that. Vendor spaces are set up anywhere on Tuscaloosa Avenue between Ninth and Carver Square. There's no charge if you want to come out and sell your goods or show off some of your good things. They want you to come out and do that, but that's this coming Saturday. I think they're gonna start around one o'clock, so if you want to come out on Tuscaloosa Avenue this coming Saturday, to First Saturday, we appreciate you, we're glad to have you. That's all.
I would like to mention a couple of things. You know, we talked about the Boys and Girls Club being closed in the summer and what our youth can do. Suggest that there's a lot of good programs going on at the library, so if you get bored with your kids, take them to the library. There's always something going on there, and we have a great library here, yes. Another thing I'd like to mention is we talked about garbage and garbage trucks. We have a very minimum garbage fee in Gaston. We subsidize that program, the garbage pickup, about $400,000 out of the general fund every year. So we could raise the fees, I guess, and buy some new trucks, but I'm not for that. I'm for subsidizing, if that's what we have to do. We are gonna buy some new trucks next year, a couple or three probably. So I understand where somebody's concerned about the garbage pickup, and we pick up trash. A lot of cities don't do that. We do provide some services for our citizens, and I'm proud, real proud of that. Another thing that we don't all agree on is with the Supreme Court's ruling on the Civil Rights Act. I'm tickled to death that they finally got the heavy boot of the federal government off the southern states' neck. So I'm pleased with that ruling, very pleased with it. That's all I have to say.
Johnny.
Thank you, Mr. President. The older the guy get, the more calmer I get. The gentleman just came up here and spoke a while ago. I appreciate everything he had to say, and he's got his right to what, his own opinion to what he has to say. You can't please everybody in this world. I don't try to please everybody, but I do know that Public Works Department has a checklist. The driver of that vehicle is supposed to check anything that is wrong with a garbage truck before they take it out. If the brake lights are bad, if it's leaking oil, there's something wrong with it, there's a checklist, you check on those vehicles. And Mr. Matthews is back here today, and I'm gonna ask him if he will, if he'll check on that and make sure everything on that truck was checked that day that this gentleman was talking about, because there's a checklist you have to go by. Is that still correct, Mr. Matthews? An oil leakage's on one of those checklists, because you don't want to drive a vehicle that's leaking oil that's gonna burn the motor up. Am I correct? Can you come to the mic and tell us what you need to tell us so we can understand you
Good afternoon. I'm Howell Matthews. I'm a public works superintendent over the garbage fleet, and the question you were asking about the oil leak is determined it was hydraulic leak, and a seal can bust at any time on the route from pressures, and we have no control over that. It's something that you couldn't determine prior to putting the truck on the road, so...
Okay, is that vehicle that the gentleman in question's talking about, is that a safe vehicle to put on the road in the City of Gaston to pick up garbage?
Well, I have to defer to the fleet manager, and as all of our vehicles are safe, I would say that, yes.
Okay.
But if he says shut it down, or we need to bring it in for repairs, we do that also.
Okay. A hydraulic leak, guys, can, you can form a hydraulic leak, you can go out and pick ten garbage cans up, you can put fifty up, you can pick two thousand up, and you can blow a seal like Mr. Matthews was sealing, that can cause hydraulic fluid to leak on the road. Usually, when that happens, the driver calls somebody, comes up there and puts some oil down, is that correct, Mr. Matthews?
That's correct.
And the spillage of the cans, I don't know what caused that, whether the glass was there or anything about how that happened, but that, we have a glass, but that was there, and I can't explain how that happened. And that's all I need, Mr. Matthews. Thank you. I do sit on this council, I have been on this council for two terms. I have won about eighty percent every time I've ran. The gentleman was referring a while ago, I don't, I don't help the city employees, I think that's what he was referring to. I was fighting for them this morning because we're going on short-term hours. You can ask any of these council guys. I was talking to the finance, Lisa Rossler, today. I was talking with Shane Ellison, assistant to the mayor, making sure we was gonna be able to keep these people working, how many hours they was gonna work under this new healthcare plan that's taken over. Yesterday morning, I had blood work done at the doctor's office, I left there, and actually ate with five of the city employees down at Chick-fil-A. Like I say, you can't please everybody, but everybody that I know that is working at the City of Gaston, still working, they got a raise, they still have their insurance. We've not laid off anybody. I just don't want that one person to spoil everything for everybody, and I'm saying I did the very best job I can do, and if anybody wants to run against me in the next election, they're more than welcome to. I welcome to, if they think they can beat me or they think they can do a better job, I would appreciate them trying to run. I love my district, and when I see something needs to be done in the district, I want it done in the district, whether it's grass in District Six, whether it's trash to be picked up, whether it's anything that needs to be done, I want it done in District Six, and I go out of my way to try to send memos and try to get everything done in District Six. There's probably some grumble employees, might not have got a raise, they might not have got where they should have been, and, you know, something might have happened to them. I don't know what it is, but you're not supposed to have disharmony among city employees. And on that note, I'm gonna leave it alone, and I'm turning it over to Ben.
Man, I am so glad he turned it over to Ben. I really am.
I could have talked to you all night, Ben.
Well, I wasn't gonna be here that long, so I'll do it. I very rarely ever apologize for anything that I do or say, and I'm not gonna start now, because we have procedures that we go by. And I'm gonna direct you, Tom, we've been going at this since 1994. We have procedures, you don't call names, you don't do this, when your time's up, you sit down. We all know that. So all I got to say is, if you're gonna laugh kinda at the city, you're gonna laugh at this council, or the number one thing I got, you step on one of my employees, I'm gonna step back about two feet, and then we'll go at it. But it just ain't the nice way to do it. Besides that, it's procedure, and we just don't do that up here. Now, I thought you understood that.
Well, I did until in your...
Well, that's okay, I'm gonna start again. Well, you and I'll go outside and do that. All right, my big thing this morning then, from the Patriots Association, have a good Fourth of July, and make sure and come out at nine o'clock Thursday. I think Kay's already covered that pretty well, and realize that the City of Gaston also participates in this, the fireworks also. And we'll have a real good time. The flags, Billy, we're ordering more flags, and I want to thank Public Works, because every occasion, they put the flags up for us, they take them down, they carry them to the cleaners, and they protect them. And I do want to take this opportunity to thank them. That's all I got.
Due to the Independence Day, Thursday's garbage route will be collected on Wednesday, and all the rest of them on their regular day. I'll entertain a motion...
Mr. President, I did have one other thing I wanted to say.
Go ahead, just one.
Just one, just one. And, you know, I guess I did have something I wanted to say, but I just, you know, it just wouldn't come to me at the moment, you know, when the president called on me, because I, you know, there were just too many things going on whirling around in my head. But we've talked about the closing of the Boys and Girls Club, youth activities, and just youth activities, period, you know, not just for the summer, but for the year-round programs that we'd like to have in our recreation centers. There was a community meeting last Thursday at New Liberty Tabernacle Parade, New Liberty, and there were several organizations represented there, CD Mental Health, United Way, several community people were there, and the results of that meeting were, or will be, the forming of a youth council. A youth council is being, a preliminary youth advisory council, youth advisory council is being formed. And this council will come together with churches and all the organizations in the city to try to provide that recreational activity, those recreational activities that we need for our youth. They're gonna have a meeting next Wednesday, next Wednesday at three o'clock at United Way Office on Fourth Street. This is the preliminary meeting of an advisory youth council for the City of Gaston that's coming together to help us in these activities. I'm sure that I'm not speaking out of term when I say, if you're interested in serving, if you're interested in doing something to help our youth in the City of Gaston, show up for that meeting and let's start this advisory council, get it underway so that we can address the problems that are facing our youth, you know, as far as recreation's concerned. Thank you.
Mr. President, can I just say one small thing?
One small thing?
One small thing. I have got to thank the people at Dwight Baptist Church for the program that they put on Sunday morning and for inviting all of us, especially myself and Barbara, my wife. It was unbelievable what they did for the Patriots Day, God and Country Day over there. They are great people, and it was a great program, and I will let them know how much we appreciate them. Excuse me.
I'll entertain a motion, we adjourn.
Some of them.
These meetings adjourned.